I call the meeting of the North Syracuse Board of Education to order, please rise and join me with the Pledge of Legions. Thank you. Again, with a moment of silence, following. Josephine Borgin, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Hey, the North Syracuse Central Board of Education makes every effort to formally recognize students, staff, and school groups that have achieved excellence. Recently, for the second consecutive year, the Cicero North Syracuse Marching Band earned the title of National Class New York State Champion. Daryl Redman, Director of Fine Arts, will award certificates of recognition which will be accepted on behalf of the Cicero North Syracuse Marching Band by Karen Siemens, Marching Band Director, and Drew Rebeki, Marching Band Assistant Director. Board of Education and myself has issued a letter recognizing the achievements of the marching band. So, Mr. Redman. Oh, I, well, yeah, this is another, this is Jerry Garcia again, of course it is.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to recognize the CNS North Stars Marching Band. Some of my thunder has already been stolen where I wanted to talk about the back-to-back championships and the only thing harder than earning a championship is holding on to it for that second and even hopefully third year. It's difficult to repeat and it really is a comment about the leadership of that association. Then that's always, to me, one of the true indicators is of success is through leadership. True leaders inspire by example, fostering an environment where each individual can thrive and contribute. They possess the foresight to envision a shared goal and the courage to navigate challenges. In the pursuit of excellence, a leader not only achieves success but empowers others to reach their full potential. And in an organization as large as the marching band with all of the different components within it, that is no easy or simple task. It takes a huge effort on the leaders to inspire and motivate those students. And I think one of the things that really does sum up the marching band is if you go to their homepage, one of the first things you'll see is a statement, "A tradition of excellence through dedication, dignity, self-discipline, and pride." And that really does epitomize all of the members of that association and the leaders within it. So, I would like to recognize the Director and Assistant Director of the marching band, Drew Rebeki and Karen Siemens. And the letter. Karen first, and you want the certificate so you can. Bar.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you. Thank you very, very much. And here is another certificate just for the Cicero North Syracuse Marching Band as a whole. So, we wanted to make sure that we were honoring them. I just want to make a few statements because I've had the opportunity to go to several of the shows and each time you think they could not get better and they did. And for those that saw the show at the Dome, because they were the, one of the last ones to perform, almost 10 o'clock at night and everybody was there, it was one of those drop-the-mic moments. They nailed it like there was nobody's business and that's why they are number one. And it was impressive to watch because all these fans around us were going, "That was really, really good." They couldn't say anything bad about the performance. So, that is a credit to you and Drew and all the students and the families because there was a lot of hard work that went throughout the season and still goes on.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we have our final building planning team presentation along with the annual budget for the North Syracuse Early Education Program. So, I'm going to turn it over to Dawn Hussein and her team. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'll give them just a second to get our presentation up. I'm Dawn Hussein. I'm the Principal at the North Syracuse Early Education Program. And I have with me tonight Leanne Phelps on my right and Cassandra Courtwright. Both are special education teachers in our program and they are sharing the role of BPT co-chair this year. So, as Mr. Farfalia said, we will do kind of two presentations and one for you tonight. The first half will be our BPT presentation. The second half will be our annual budget presentation. So, I will turn it this way.
Perfect, thank you. All right, so I'm going to give you just an introduction to our building. That beautiful building up there is the former Main Street Elementary Building that has been home to us since 1980. Our program services a variety of needs. So, we have three, four, and five-year-olds in our building. And each of our classrooms works together with a multidisciplinary team. So, our teachers function as both special education and general education providers. Our classrooms each hold teaching assistance with the teachers. And then we have speech therapists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, psychologists, and a social worker that all work together to service our students. About half of our students have special needs and the other half are typical students, some of those being UPK students. They join us, some students five days a week, some two, and some three. So, a lot of moving pieces. Our staff is kind of home in North Syracuse, but our students actually come to us from all across Anadaga County.
Oh, yes. All right, as you look at our building demographics, you can see that our student population this year is about the same. However, we do see a 2% increase in the amount of students from North Syracuse Central School District. Based on an increase in therapy needs of the population of the children we serve, we have added two new classrooms, which allowed us to open up four additional half-day sections. We have also increased our staff, including teachers and therapists to meet the needs of our students. As we continue to encourage families to complete and return the free and reduced lunch form, we expect to see an increase in that number as the year progresses. The transient number of students significantly increased this year. That is due to the opening of the two new classrooms in February of last year, excuse me, yes. As we continue on to the next slide, I'll give you a minute to look at our vision and mission statements that are in alignment with the district strategic plan. All right, so we'll look at building goal number one. It's to move all professional learning teams from the implementations to the implementation stage by the end of the year of the school year. To reach this goal, a small cohort of staff, myself included, attended the Professional Learning Community Institute in August. Information has been shared with the building planning team to disperse the staff. Also, as a member of the district's MTSS Committee, I am attending additional solution tree meetings regarding the PLC to further drive the work at the early education program. And teachers have worked on establishing essential standards and are moving on to unpack them, which means we're breaking them down for clarity across staff.
Right, so building goal number two is the graduation rate. For us, because our kiddos are so little, we're really looking at absenteeism rates and working on that as a way to kind of increase our students' graduation rates over the course of their educational careers. So, our goal is to reduce the absenteeism rate by 5%. Of course, the last couple of years with COVID, those numbers have kind of fluctuated and looked different for different reasons. We did reduce it, you can see, from 2021 to the 2022 school year and our hope is to continue that trend through this year. So, a couple of things we're doing to work on that, certainly engaging families in our program. I think when our kids are so little, one of the most important things we can do is get their families on board with school being, you know, the best place for them to be. So, our PTO meetings held once a month. We've had a lot of attendance so far, which is really encouraging. The PTO puts on a lot of great events for families. Our Coffee Connection is a family training program that we host once a month. Our social worker finds resources and connections in the community that then come to speak to our families. There's childcare provided, sometimes meals and snacks, and then, of course, parent conferences, finding time to meet with our families and share how their students are doing in the classroom. We also have monthly attendance committee meetings, so a couple of different departments are represented, Dawn being one, and then our nurse's office, and then teachers come as they have concerns about students and their attendance. And the goal there is to get a game plan how we can problem-solve attendance issues for students. So, it really starts with the teachers, but, you know, we work together to figure out what we can do. So, the health office might send communications or get in touch with the families. Attendance letters may come from Dawn, and then at times we also get our social worker involved just to problem-solve how we can help students get to school more often. We do have some particular challenges with our students being so young, one of them being transportation. Our special education students do receive busing, but our typical students do not. So, we are relying on families to be able to get them there each day. Of course, germs are a big factor with our students being so little. They are rampant at most times of the year and we're really working on those self-help skills, but they are growing and learning how to do that. So, hand washing, wiping, all of those good things, they're evolving skills. Luckily, we have returned to our pre-COVID standards in the health office. So, during COVID, any sniffly nose was sent home and COVID test to return. That's not the case anymore, so we are able to keep students in school more consistently, which is great and we're hoping will help us with the absenteeism rate. Goal number three for us is working on reading and math proficiency. Our goal is to have students gain 10 points on the speed dial assessment from September to June. So, we start assessing students when they come to us and then, again, before they leave us at the end of the year. I will speak kind of more to what the speed dial assesses in just a minute, but these are some of the things that we are doing to build up our students' skills. So, along with the rest of the district, we're using the Higerty Funny Mc Awareness Program. We're using both the three-year-old and four-year-old versions of that, depending on which is more appropriate for the classroom populations. We're using Learning Without Tears, which really looks at how we use lines and curves to build letters and numbers, incorporating things like play and music and different pieces for the kids to learn that. We have three classrooms that are piloting CKLA this year to see how we feel about, you know, kind of adding that to our programming as well. Play is our big message in the early education program. You know, our kids are young and play is the most valuable tool for them, really. So, all of our classrooms are using play every single day. Actually, fun fact for you, play builds new skills much faster than any other form of repetition. So, when you're learning a new skill, it takes about 400 repetitions to build that. In play, it only takes 10 to 20. So, you know, that's, you can't compare to that. Play is so important for our kids. Our curriculum map was built by our teachers. It uses the New York State preschool standards alongside themes and the different curriculums that we're using so that the kids are all getting a comprehensive approach across the building. And then, of course, as Cassandra mentioned, our teachers are also all engaged in PLC work. All right, so this is our data from the speed dial. We look at growth in both our general and special education students. So, the speed dial is the kindergarten screener that the rest of the district uses as well. So, for us, we start a little bit early so we can get kind of a head start on building those skills for students. The speed dial measures eight different categories of all different things. So, gross motor skills, fine motor skills, things like design and copy. So, students' ability to look at something and bring it back to their own paper, see, as they get older, becomes very important. It also looks at things like colors, letters, counting, problem-solving, articulation. So, when we do that in the beginning of the year, it really allows us to pinpoint where they need the most support as the year goes on and allows us to get that support to them early. And then, at the end of the year, we can see how much growth they've made in those areas, particularly as they're getting ready to go to kindergarten. So, last year, we were just shy of our 10-point goal. We're really attributing that to the needs of the students. Following COVID, the needs have been greatly increased and our students are kind of coming to us with more need than ever. So, it's taking them a little bit longer to gain those skills, but certainly they are still headed in the right direction, still making growth, and we're excited to see that. So, our goal will continue to be growing those 10 points over the course of the school year. And then this is our growth of students with disabilities, again, looking at the same thing. So, students with or without disabilities are all given the speed dial to assess skills. We actually historically see a trend of students with disabilities gaining more growth than our typical students, which is wonderful to see.
So, building goal number four is focused on building emotional competency in our students. The goal is to provide social-emotional support by teaching the skills needed for students to self-regulate their behaviors and to develop positive relationships with adults and with peers. Domain number three of the New York State preschool standards is focused on social-emotional learning. So, this is very much aligned with state standards. Over the past four years, we have embraced the Second Step Curriculum across all of our classrooms and we've benefited from having Lucille Lewis, a coach in our building, regularly throughout those four years. And she is funded through the Peddles grant funding. This year, we discovered a different program called Handle With Care Behavior Management System for working with children with some of those very challenging behaviors. And a team of professionals from the early education program came together. They've become known as our Behavior Task Force, or the BTF. I'll refer to them. They attended a specialized turnkey training in verbal de-escalation techniques and therapeutic holds that's very specific to the early childhood population, the only program that we could find that was relevant to early childhood. The BTF is made up of our two school psychologists, our social worker, registered nurse, and myself. And this particular training was especially timely because New York State updated the regulations in the summertime specific to restraints. And as turnkey trainers, the BTF came and presented the verbal component of the training to our entire program on October 31st. And right now, they're in process of training key positions within the building for the therapeutic holds. And we will continue to conduct this training annually. The tool that we use to measure social-emotional growth is the electronic form of the DEVERO Early Childhood Assessment, which is also referred to as the EDECA. We complete this checklist twice a year for every student. And this chart shows the growth in each of the areas measured by the EDECA, initiative, self-regulation, attachment and relationships, and behavioral concerns. And what we want to see here is that the number of students that are in the need category decreases as the year passes and that those students move to the typical or strength area. And then that last category, behavioral concern, is only rated as typical or in need. There isn't a strength area on that area. And we did see growth in all of these areas.
Looking now at our celebrations, we have a lot to celebrate this year. As Dawn stated, we did some professional learning opportunities, the Handle With Care, which was very important for our staff and relevant. We are very excited to receive a $200,000 grant from Alstirby. Our hope is to use the funding for bathroom renovation and more floor remodels. Six classrooms have already received floor remodels. As a result of COVID relief funding, we were able to purchase new classroom and therapy furniture to benefit both students and staff. Looking at our Title I funding, which allows us to keep our social worker on staff. She has been responsible for organizing our holiday program. With the generosity of our community, we are able to help support 21 families for a total of 53 people this year for the holidays, based on all the work that she has done. So, are there any? Oh, yep, and this is, excuse me, these are the members that make up BPT. Are there any questions?
I just have a comment. I love what you said about play with the kids and how they learn. I think it's great that you're looking at growth and monitoring how they're doing. I just, this is probably my own soapbox thing, is that you're doing a lot with the kids academically as well. Again, I love to hear that the focus was on the play, the SEL of the children. These are their formative years. I just get worried in education in general, especially the younger they are of, I know we all mean well, but of where they are developmentally and trying to get all of that curriculum that the state's telling us and everyone is telling us to get it in them, get it in them. And I think that leads to, you know, some of the mental health crisis that we're seeing in education nowadays. So, I guess I'm making that comment. It seems like, one, you're on the right track with your focus and it, you know, two, let's always keep that focus and not let, "Oh, they're not at this, they're not at this level yet." You know what? Developmentally, it's just not their time to start writing letters yet. It's just, maybe this person can. You know, at eight months, if a child walks, it doesn't mean that they're going to be a world track star when they get older. And the same child who walks at 13 months, maybe they will be that world track style, but it's so individualized. And to compare them at this age is, you know, it's good information to know, but if one's here and one's there, for the time being, we're okay. And thank you for all that you're doing for the kids. These are the formative years. They're very important in a child's, you know, developmental stages there, and thank you.
Now for the most interesting part of the conversation, right? Okay. So. All right, so as a reminder, we are a 44-10 inclusive special education preschool program and therefore our budget operates very independent of the school district K through 12 budget, which is why we present separately. Our funding mainly comes from these four categories. The first is state and county-funded tuition reimbursement rates for our special education students. These rates include an anticipated 6.25% increase for this school year. The second source of funding is our UPK partnership with the district for our four-year-olds that attend five days a week in our full-day program and in our afternoon half-day program. The third area is parent-paid tuition for our general education students, specific to three-year-olds and our out-of-district students. And lastly, we have an additional revenue category that we've categorized as other. This includes the 611 and 619 federal grant funding, which we also refer to as flow-through money. And this year, while we are prioritizing North Syracuse students, we are currently having 11 school districts enrolled in our program. Another source of grant funding comes specifically to our CPSC staff. And our Title I grant money, as was already mentioned, supports our social worker position. In addition, we also receive revenue for conducting evaluations at the preschool level. This slide represents the summary of estimated revenue that's specific to special education, general education, and UPK tuition revenue, and it also includes our summer program. Our anticipated tuition revenue is just over 7.6 million. And just to note that this amount represents tuition revenue only and that additional revenue will be calculated at a future date for grant funding and evaluation revenue. Our estimated expenditures for this school year are noted here at just under 8.3 million, which is an anticipated 9. which is an anticipated 9.63% increase over last year. And as has already been noted, our expenses have increased more than expected due to the increased staffing needs in order to meet the therapy needs specifically of our students. This pie chart is just a different representation of the estimated expenditures. And really just notes that 94.4% of our expenses are directly related to salary and benefits of our staff. For other financial thoughts, last year at this time, we had an outstanding waiver that was pending with the state for the 2020-2021 deficit that we had of $500,000. We were only granted less than half of that request as a one-time relief when historically the entire amount has been factored directly into our reimbursement rates. We're also seeking at that time some clarification. We had an anticipated 11% increase last year. We were seeking clarification on what would be allowed to be done with the overage. And it was determined in the late spring last year that programs would be allowed to keep only up to a 1% overage. So we needed to make sure that we spent that 11% increase. We were pleasantly surprised to learn that we would be receiving a small increase in rates for evaluations in our one-to-one teaching assistance. And that is something that had not been addressed in my entire 13 years here with the district from the state. So we were happy that they at least recognized that it was time to increase in those areas. This year, the state education department was allocated $2.5 million to study and design a new rate methodology in hopes of streamlining and improving the timeliness of our tuition rates for special education students. This study was also intended to help ensure special education providers can continue quality programming for students with disabilities. So we're waiting to see what the results of that brings after the study is conducted this year. Overall, preschool has been deemed by the state to be in a state of crisis. There's significant shortages of services across our county and across our state. And the needs of the students have intensified, which has required us to prioritize our own district students and has created an increase in the staffing that's required at the early education program. We're currently in process of hiring additional therapy staff, speech, occupational therapy, and physical therapy because we still have a handful of openings in our program and our therapists are at capacity. So we have not accounted for the addition of those therapy staff in our budget presentation today. But should that put us into a deficit deficit situation, we do have an adequate fund balance in order to cover the shortage. And that is all I have for the budget presentation. I would welcome any questions that you all may have about that.
Yeah, I just have one question and forgive me because I am the newest member here. So sometimes I ask questions that everyone else must answer too. So it looked like there was a $7.6 million expected in revenue, but then it's 8.2 in expenditures. Now, what you were just saying there is that the fund that's already there can cover that difference if necessary. If for whatever reason, some of the grants don't come all the way through or you're not able to get as much.
Right, so that 7.6 million dollars is just the tuition. We also do receive that additional grant funding. And you should have received a separate spreadsheet that would really lay that out for you. But the 611 and 619, the evaluation revenue, the CPSC grant, those are all additional things that that come into play. We don't get exact amounts for those until well after the school year has passed. So that is one of the things hopefully that's being studied in the tuition rate methodology study is the the funding often comes to us a couple of years after the fact. And then any of those rates, it's almost impossible to budget for for a school year based on the current methodology. So so that's a great reason why the study is being done, to hopefully come up with a solution for that. Many programs across our county and across the state have closed. In my 13 years here, we've seen a program close every couple of years. And so it just minimizes the amount of services that are then available to students. We often pull from the same pool that the early intervention team is is pulling from for therapists as well. So the birth to three, so we're seeing kids that are on waitlists the entire time they're in early intervention. They're coming to preschool, they're being put on waitlists again, and sometimes even going on to kindergarten, not having received any level of service, which is going to be detrimental, you know. So so there are some additional funding that's not noted on that slide. So the gap is not quite from 7.6 to 8.2, but we do anticipate a gap. And then, yes, the fund balances where we kind of fall back to.
How much questions? Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, we have London, who's going to update us on a lot of things, professional development, world language, and ENL updates. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
Good evening, and thank you again for the opportunity to come back and give you updates in the areas. And give you some hopefully valuable information to inform you. Again, I'm hoping you've had a chance to kind of preview some of the notes in the slideshow. So that the numbers I'm throwing out at you, this isn't the first time you've had some chance to digest them. I've chosen here to take again the very similar approaches last year with my presentation around these three areas, just to kind of keep some continuity. And just want to give you the the idea of where we're at, you know, an update on these different programs, what our initiatives are, and then some of the celebrations and successes that we're experiencing for this past year. So starting out with professional development. When we look at summer PD, just to give you a quick overview, you saw that we had a really incredible number of unique users. And by unique, we mean that individual user, they may have attended four or five different things, but they count as one user. So our attendance may seem, may come across much higher, but we like to look at how many unique users actually took part in summer professional development. So for our district, it was 434 unique participants for teachers and 70 unique participants for our TAs. That totaled, as you saw in the numbers, over 4,800 hours that the teachers participated in and 497, just under 500 hours for our teaching assistance. The focus areas for summer professional development, again, trying to give you a quick overview of the diversity of offerings, of the diversity of agencies that offered professional development and what folks took advantage of. Our tech coaches, the 18 offerings that resulted in 550 attendees. Our instructional coaches with 15 offerings that had 200 attendees. Math with nine offerings, approximately 100 attendees. Restorative practice in social emotional learning, 12 offerings with approximately 150 attendees. That's that was some of just the top, top 10 of our, what we offered, what people attended. In addition to that, BOCs offered more than 20 things that our staff took advantage of. You saw some of the areas of interest there, it's very much around technology with AI and ChatGPT. Canva, one of the programs that they're now using the classroom a great deal, Google programs. We also continue to take advantage of the CNYS Oswego County Teaching Center with the sessions on DEI matters and one trusted adult seeing more than 30 of our staff participate. So that's in addition to some of those SEL and restorative practice sessions mentioned earlier, when we talk about looking at the student needs and and our interactions, relationships with students. And finally, Learner's Edge continued, Next Gen Personal Finance, and EdWeb, those all continue to be very popular. What we did not have available this summer, due to the fact that the state did not offer a grant through NICEIT, was those online mini virtual sessions where they had 30 offerings, weren't 30 offerings last year that our staff were able to take advantage of. The grant was not provided to NICEIT to be able to put that out there. They're hoping again to get that in place for next summer. That was probably one of the things our staff last year had the most positive feedback on. The versatility, the the difference in topics, it was a very, very usable and very, very popular professional development. For new staff orientation, I'll give our audience a moment just to kind of read some of those comments there from the participants. It's one of the pieces that we're very proud of in our district because we follow up on great recruitment with support that results in great retention of our new staff. And in the landscape of education right now, it's very important to make sure that we are keeping and maintaining and, you know, and retaining our great staff. It's a great three-day program. And we have really focused on getting that feedback from the participants that's usable for us as a team to then be able to go and revamp it, to modify it. To be honest, we did the three days, we're finding is we don't even have enough time to cover everything that they they could use. And they kind of walk out a little bit glazed in the eyes. But we end on some great notes with them feeling supported, feeling equipped, and then heading back to the buildings. As I mentioned in the notes, the days consist of meeting the directors, meeting the principals, having some sessions on everything from McKinvento and homeless to SEL, to suicide awareness, to APPR information. They spend a half day with NSCA. They have a half day back in their buildings to get familiar with their classroom, their surroundings, and their mentors. And it's really a very extensive and comprehensive program that covers a lot of ground in a very short time. Very, very proud of that feedback that we've received. Our goal, though, is to improve the quality every year. Credit to the consultant teacher team who really played the major role in designing, putting on our new staff orientation. Finally, in the area of professional development is looking at our superintendent's conference day. Just to let you know, this year is a slightly different model because what we did was shifted all of our half-days to being building-based. So all of the half-days were, we used to alternate those between the directors would drive a half-day and then the buildings would have the half-day. And there was always a lot of confusion about who has kind of rights to that time and who's who who's borrowing from this department or who's taking from that grade level for that time. So this really cleared that up. The buildings have those half-days to work on their own building goals. That also corresponds to the start and end times of their day. One of the tough times we had in the past about our half-days was if I have, for instance, K-12 ENL teachers and the end time at the half-day is different for elementary, middle, junior high, and high school, pulling them together for a half-day really resulted in a lot less time by the time elementary get get there and secondary had to leave. So our two superintendent's conference days are director-driven, so that the whole district starts and ends at the same time. We can maximize that time. We broke it down into four sessions across the day. Some of the professional development at that day lasted all four sessions. You know, we had a trainer come in and worked with the department. For instance, in our math, University of Rochester, those trainers came in and worked with the math teachers almost all day. Others were half-days, some were one session. There was a combination of a full day being filled up and part of the day being filled up. We did have just under 80 sessions that we offered district-wide to all of our staff. Trying to balance my side to side here, please. So if we get a workman's comp issue after this. We did put out a survey afterwards where we had 185 respondents, which is a really good percentage, just under 25% of our staff that responded and gave us feedback. And I will tell you, the feedback was as varied as the day and the sessions and our staff. We had some folks who were extremely pleased and some who weren't, and for all different reasons. What we're doing right now, the follow-up is we're kind of looking for patterns in that survey feedback. One place we're going to take that is through our CLP, which stands for the Community of Learning Professionals. That used to be our Professional Development Committee. It just has a different title now that has representation from every one of the buildings, from district office, from different units. And there, we're going to look through that and they're going to bring more feedback from their specific buildings as well as the directors are preparing to meet. As a matter of fact, in the next week, we're going to be getting together to kind of debrief on that day, look at the feedback and make some modifications and changes and start planning for March already. One of our goals in this is to increase coordination, communication around the day so that folks aren't confused about where they're supposed to be going. They're not pulled in two different directions because one director needs them at this session, another director needs them here, and really coordinate as a director's unit around what's expected for those two days. We also, just to note, we had, we had offerings that day for a real wide variety of our staff. We had session for our teacher aides, we had sessions for our TAs. We had our nurses that were part of PD, we had our office personnel that were able to be a part of PD. We had everything, I think, except for administration. We actually were talking about having some professional development for ourselves on those days. There was a variety of that. So that's that's the overview of professional development. Out of world languages.
Can I just, before you go into a different topic, so so is the March, the March is another director's day?
Directors are not touching any of the half-days as far as pulling people. They are available to support buildings. So if the building principal says, hey, Dave, the building needs something on ENL, can you come and do that? We're available for that, but we're not pulling people out on those days.
So you you just quickly glanced over the idea of professional development for administrators. Is that something you you'll look at, though?
Absolutely, I already started to, like, and actually, when I get to the ENL side, I'll show you a place where we've already begun with those principals of the buildings, they have the ENL program, we've already started some PD for them as well. Yeah, we we tend to kind of put our professional development either into the summer or into our principals and directors, our administrative team meetings. But we're exploring the idea of what can we offer for our leadership on those days.
Great idea.
So for world languages, starting out with our enrollment and our recruitment. Really quickly, just mentioning that that the issue here is that enrollment is declining. There's the discrepancy between our two languages widening. So we're really just starting to do some fact-finding, unpacking the data to look at what the reasons are for that. As a matter of fact, they had about an hour and a half meeting with the four department chairs this afternoon. And we went through and we started looking and unpacking, yeah, we we need to drill down a little bit more. What we're trying to avoid is any type of competition between the two languages. You know, we don't want that, but we also know that it's it's changing. And we're trying to find out the reasons why, to be very honest, so we can identify the reasons for one language decreasing by 37% over the past five years and the other by about 2%. And past just recruitment, so what we're doing is we're starting to look at what are we doing to recruit students in? Not because of the lack of enrollment, we have 100% of our seventh years who come in who have to join one of the two languages, right? But looking at, do we have students that may be interested in one more than the other? And that might boost our French enrollment at that entry point. But past that, we have to look at retention. That once the students get past the the required courses, the seven, 7A and 7B, what is preventing students from wanting to go on and go up to the Spanish 2, 3, 4, 5 level, French 2, 3, 4, 5 level? And part of this is, you know, just competition. There's a lot more being offered now to compete against students' times to want to go to those higher levels in those world languages. Some of it is the language is changing in our, in our, in our society and what what languages are available as well. So we're we're just starting that process of unpacking why and looking at both the recruitment and the retention pieces that we have. As far as current initiatives, giving you a quick update. Our pilot process, as I mentioned, we're slightly behind, but we've established our rubric. We've basically taken the board policy and made it into a checklist to go step by step. And we're hoping to have vendors come in from five different companies to look at across this month, the next one, and then start the pilot for the second half of the year to make our decision moving forward. What I will say is that across the entire department, it's consistently looked at as the textbook process. This is not the curriculum, this is a supplement to it. It's just like so many of our other resources that we're utilizing because world languages is completely a performance-based area. And so it's not just about the textbook, it's about some of the new online products and some authentic resources that they need to search for that line up with the new standards that were adopted last year in world languages. So we're moving to that area. Sorry, eDoctrine, we have been working hard in Spanish at the early, at the 1A level and at the 3 level, French 1 through 5. And we have, I think, just over a dozen units that have been placed in there now in edoctrine. We're working to continue that across this spring and into next summer. And by the end of next year, have all of Spanish and French units in edoctrine and then shift towards fine-tuning our assessments for the. Finally, the end of the year assessment, actually, the notes, I would need to correct something in the notes based on the meeting I just had this afternoon. I had mentioned to you that we are discontinuing the Apple as an assessment. The feedback that I've received is there's parts, the Apple is a four-part test that assesses the four modalities for world languages. Last year, two of those result, the results came back and we were, we just had some questions about the the results and the scoring of that. And so there's a couple of components that we're looking to now develop in-house and a couple of components because you can actually purchase them by component as well that for ease of use, we may continue using. So we're still in discussion about that, trying to lock it up over the next few weeks so that we're set for students this year. But it's been a real challenge. We've actually explored a number of different assessments, different districts, different BOCs. And there's not a lot out there that we've, that we feel that is better than what we could either create internally or use in part from the app. And finally, some celebrations, a lot to celebrate in world languages. And finally, some celebrations, a lot to celebrate in world languages. I hope you had a chance to read those numbers with the seal of bi-literacy because they're really, really impressive. The fact that we had not just 20 recipients of the seal of bi-literacy last spring, but two of our English language learners receive it. Three students earning the seal of tri-literacy and one student earning the seal of quad literacy. Yeah, right? And in case you were wondering, the four languages for that student are Gujarati, Hindi, Spanish and English that they were able to demonstrate proficiency with at that high level in multiple ways. And Dan and I were up at OCC for that, the Raider Day last spring and it was pretty amazing. Our two students that had a seal of tri-literacy, those were Bulgarian, Spanish and English and Tagalog, Spanish and English. So some of our students are using their primary languages because we've become much more diverse in that E and L population and then coupling it to our world language program and then English as, as their, as in. So a lot going on with the seal by Larry's just some great things. Had some great celebrations with Hispanic Heritage Month and French Week, including one of our hockey players coming and, and of course the kids. They were so intrigued by the French culture, what they really wanted to know is how many, what happens with the fights in the hockey rink and how many penalty minutes he added. But it was a great conversation. He was a great sport about responding to them in French to challenge them. World Culture Exploration elective. You can see in the notes, we've had a number of guests come, this is our new elective, this is the first semester for it. It's been a great success so far, some great presenters and field trips. Again, for the audience sake that they may not see in the notes. We had a bag piper, a piper, Jack Hines came, Salt City Market owner, Adam Sudman. And they also took a field trip this past Friday to the Salt City Market so that Adam could take them through. The lost boy in Sudan, from Sudan, local politician Cholma Jacque, who's featured there in the picture, came to speak with the students. Members from Interfaith Works from the, who also had the Polish paper cutting workshop, which I'm sorry, I missed out on getting up there to see that one. And then they're also going to be visiting the Skanone Great Law and Peace Center. So some great things that are going on with exploring the other cultures through those other languages this year for some of those students. And finally, probably what I'm most proud of with the department is the Lechne Conference. For the November 7th Superintendent's Conference Day, a number of districts around On Doggy County decide, that had Superintendent's Conference Day on the same day, decided to schedule that as their conference day for world languages so that more teachers could attend. And it was free and it didn't require subs because it was on that professional development day, Superintendent's Conference Day. And that's what we made available for our world language department. We didn't compete with it with anything else here in the district. And so all of our members went, we had three of our department members present. One of them is on the board and actually helped put together and facilitate the entire event. And it was really a great day, I was able to stop out there for about an hour, hour and a half on the day and watch some of our teachers present. And for them to come together, seven 12 was one of the few times that vertically they get to spend time together around their practice, around their content areas. So it was a really great day. So proud of that. And I'll shift quickly to E and L. Just as an additional resource to what I put in your, in your packet. What's coming around now is the state's overview of the units of study for E and L because I want to give a brief explanation of how it works. Hopefully it'll be very brief because I know I'm probably already over my 12 to 15 minutes. Uh, but for E and L. Looking at the program overview, our total numbers, as I mentioned to you, we are now servicing approximately 280 students. And while your notes said just under 280 since Friday, that's now up over 280. So the numbers are changing as we speak. And we have 193 there at the levels one through four and 88 at level five. I can tell you that from, just to go into those numbers a little bit more, from June 5th to September 5th. So from the time we started screening our new entrance, we started in June because of the incoming kindergartners. Until the time school opened, we had 42 new entrants that were English language learners. And then from September 6th until now, 20 more new entrants. So we've had 62 new entrants. Now that doesn't necessarily mean the program net 62 because one of the challenges of this program is very transient. We've had a number of students move out. We've had enough, we have the incoming kindergartners, we have the exiting high school seniors. But of those 62, 20 of them are new, new kindergartners, they're just in a district. So these numbers, it's, it's somewhat of a moving target. But when I mentioned units of study, that chart you have, the top line in dark purple basically gives you those five proficiency levels. When we say levels one through five. The piece I want to point out is where a student tested their proficiency drives the number of minutes of servicing they get. So the lower proficiency level, the more minutes they get. It also drives a setting in which they receive those minutes. So the lower proficiency level, the more minutes they get in what's called standalone, which would be similar to what special education is termed as a pullout model, you know? And they call integrated what would be like a pushing type of model. You can see as you go up on that continuum, the, the more proficient they become, the less minutes and the least, less restrictive of a learning environment they have for servicing. But that can change at any time, right? So we could receive an 11th grader who comes in and is at the entering level. So he requires all those minutes in that pullout setting, that standalone setting. And that can completely throw off our scheduling and our staffing because we cannot guarantee what proficiency level. Again, because it's performance based on the language that an English language, English language learner is going to enter our district at. And that fifth level up there commanding, just so you know, we are required by regulation to service those students. But that is not a category that we receive funding back from the state on. We only report to the state once through fours and get, get funding for the ones through fours. The commandings, we still have two years worth servicing for them or required to provide, but no funding. And then the nicest slot growth, again, some great numbers there. The reason why the total number of students is different is simply because I can only gauge that from students who were here the year prior and took the nice slide again this year. So students who came in, in 22, 23, we didn't have the 21, 22, it wasn't growth for us. And students who exited, we don't have that. But of those 197, almost 50% progressed at least one proficiency level. We had a handful of students that actually jumped to proficiency levels. So it's not just about the numbers and it's not just about the minutes, but I wanted to show you that we're seeing growth towards that higher proficiency and that higher independence level. Capacity and communication. That's really what our initiative is around, it's around professional development. If we had more time, we'd be trying to provide more for our staff. Our E and L teachers have had some specific PD for them. They're focusing on writing for English language learners. We're working with Auburn, which is Regional Bilingual Educational Resource Network. Say it to you because I'm proud that I finally learned it. And so we've been developing some new forms for our translation interpretation. System wide, you can see the picture there, that's two of our own E and L teachers at the high school on one of the half days presenting to the staff up there, Elliot Jafred and Letty Rolldan provided explanations around E and L services and E and L practices to the staff up at the high school. And then the administrative and L professional development, starting this year, we've booked a few half days with Auburn to come in and work with our building administrators who have the E and L program, their building, so that they can learn more. And there were some real eye openers for us about the process, how to manage the program from a systems level. Finally, celebrations and successes. E and L teachers you see in the picture, we're part of the annual T-Sol Conference in Albany just a few weeks ago as presenters, as participants. They've done this for a number of years, they are experts, they just do a great job of representing our district, representing their field and presenting to people from all over the state in the area of English as a new language. We had a new parent orientation meeting this year, we decided to consolidate instead of having individual meetings at each building for maybe one or two parents, have them all come here to the district office before school started as the regs require. Bring in the translators so that they could sit in light groups according to their primary language and hear the whole new entry process and the program explained to them in their primary language. And then finally, thrilled to be a part of a multi-year research project, which one typo in here is it says SUNY, it should be SUNY Cortland. Dr. Stinson has approached us. The bulk of research around English language learners right now is focused on Spanish and is focused on large urban areas like the big five. So what she's looking to do is add to the body of research on more suburban areas that have a high number of low incidence languages. So Spanish is not one of our top languages, you know, we have, we have Arabic, we have some Chinese, we have Vietnamese. We have over 28, I think we have 28 or 29 languages represented in our district right now in our E and L program. That's a lot of small incidence languages like Farsi, Dari that only a few students have. So we're proud to be a part of that research study to hope to add to that body of research. And of course, I always want to take a minute just to kind of land on the people who are really doing the work behind the scenes. Every year, just a great group of people in all these areas that I oversee. Ability to come out and give these really proud and successful reports to you about what we're doing. Thanks to them. And I'm talking, feel many questions you might have. Questions or comments?
A quick comment. I think another celebration you have is on the field trips back, like there was kids that went to Montreal in the spring and that was an amazing experience. And then there's kids going to Puerto Rico this summer, right?
Yeah, we, there's, there's, there's a lot that we're starting to reopen and reoffer for them as the experiences. And even if they're not out of the country, we, we had some that wanted to go down New York City, we weren't able to put off on a timeline. But to get to see a Broadway musical that's in Spanish, we're looking to do that again next year, get ahead of it because it happens in September really quickly. So some great opportunities are expanding for those students, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Again, that's credit to the teachers are really looking at what more can we add and how can we enrich the program for these students? Other questions? Thomas, yes.
Not really a question, but a comment, but I just thought I'd say for the Spanish and French enrollment that you've been talking about, seeing the decrease over the past few years. I think a lot of that has to do with just how big of an influence and kind of an impact Hispanic culture has had like in American culture, especially the past few years. I mean, with a lot of shows and movies and especially music coming out, you know, you're seeing tops of the charts and a lot of it is in Spanish or at least partially. So I think that has a big deal to do with like the interest of students. But then another thing, and I remember hearing this back when I was personally choosing a language. It's not why I chose Spanish, but heard a lot of people say that they believe it's easier. And in a lot of ways, like I suppose it kind of is, but I don't think that should be why someone chooses a language. But I just thought I'd let you know that a lot of kids might be choosing Spanish because like, oh, the pronunciation is easier, blah, blah, blah.
It's interesting to say it because that was one of the topics of conversation or means it is. There is, I think a misnomer out there that Spanish is easier. And at the entry level, at that seventh grade level, both languages are the same for all students to kind of turn to. It's the same, you know, curriculum of and what the structures are, the language and what you want to learn. But you bring up a great point that Spanish has become so much more accessible in our culture every day. That a number of students probably see that as I'm already have some familiarity with this, so it's going to be a little bit easier to ease into. And I think we're also, we're in competition with other languages. There's some global business pieces too that are coming into play here too. And so there's a lot to consider and that's what we're, we're, we're trying to debunk what's myth and you know, strengthen the program.
Very interesting.
Thank you very much. Others? All right, thank you, Dave.
All right, thank you again for the chance. Excuse me, public content section in the board meetings are meetings in public where we welcome attendance and observation. Here we also welcome your comments on matters related to the district compared to time not to exceed a total of 30 minutes is set aside at regular meetings of the board for the purpose here and comments from interested individuals. Board of Ed members will not engage in conversation or answer questions during this portion of the meeting. Issues involving particularly students or employees are not permissible topics during the public meeting. During she brought to the superintendent schools during regular business hours. Speaker's going to have three minutes. There'll be no more than 10 individual speakers, we have two tonight and you cannot give or defer your time slot to another person. All remarks must be addressed to the president of the board or presiding officer. Most questions related to schools can be answered by responsible school official. My calling during business hours, written questions may also be addressed to school staff, department director, central administration or the Board of Education clerk. That, we're going to start, we have two, we'll start with Angela Nicoletti Cox. Ready?
I know a number of you, so this is great to be here. My name is Angela Cox and my son Joe is a sophomore at CNS High School. He's loving it. I want to thank you for the opportunity tonight to speak to all of you. Joey has been involved in the arts since fourth grade at Smith Road. Starting with his first musical, which was Cinderella and also learning the saxophone, which is one of. Loves is, is. On his way through each of these schools, he has had the support of all of his teachers, directors and other art staff members. We've helped him love musicals and acting thrown in him. This year, he's had the best experience playing Teddy Brewster in Arsenic and Old Lace. Couple of weeks ago, it's, you know, not been that long ago. And my son's excitement for being a part of the drama club in the high school has just grown immensely in just a few months. All with the help of the North Syracuse School District and their belief in every student should follow their dreams. I admire the school district for hiring a new never before position of a fine arts director for the school district. This shows how much they are dedicated to the diversity of our students. For the love of the arts as well as our community. This has allowed the students to form a camaraderie around their love of the arts. Still is extremely important. I would also like to say how proud I am of Joe and other fellow students for always standing up for others who may have been bullied for their diversity or just plain left out. This is how we have raised our son and that has been furthered by his education here in the North Syracuse School District. Thank you again for making safety for all students a high priority. All I wanted to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Jessica Sullier.
There was a presentation at the last board meeting with information presented from the junior high. I'm specifically speaking about the emotional competencies that were discussed. As of the VIMAS testing that was last shown, 40% are at risk for self-awareness, 34% at high risk for self-management, 15% at high risk for social awareness, 15% at high risk for relational relationship skills and 20% at high risk for responsible decision-making. I find it ironic that the students are taking a test and showing us the scores that they are at high risk are the very areas that are, we are entrusting adults to help lead, guide and direct them. It's even more ironic that some said adults and educators find it appropriate to expose minor children to material they are showing they are not ready for. Have minor children that are lacking in self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills and responsible decision-making. Let's provide them with instructional material that exposes them to pornography, drug use, physical abuse, how to get on adult dating apps and not get caught by your parents. Rape, group masturbation, graphic novels on opening fire in schools, suicide. Let's not forget sexual orientation, gender confusion, pronouns, when to use and when not. Sexual positions and how to perform all sexual acts and at least, but not, last but not least, encourage them less and less parental transparency and collaboration. Seems counterproductive, seems destructive for our youth and careless for the district and some of its educators to provide materials on the very things we know our children are struggling with and having presentations and strategies and how to help them. How many surveys and questionnaires will it take for you to figure it out that what you're currently doing in the direction that some are heading in is not beneficial for the educational growth and mental well billing being for some and the physical well-being of our minor children. Currently, we are confusing most, if not all children more and putting more pressure on them to think about things that they, per the scores, are not capable of figuring out. Why are we doing this? As educators, you have a choice and a public duty to educate our children. So when they leave the district, they are either continuing their education in college. They're going to be a positive and active addition to the workforce, be active in our military, be positive additions to the communities and a generation that can lead and go on to do great things. Instead, many kids will be scholars on other subjects that bear no weight or merit on the outside use of, or the outside walls of the schools. Many of the issues focused on and encouraged are not relevant in the life of an adult. As a district, we do need to do better in some areas and make some changes. We are doing very good in, in many areas. I'm not always up here to tear down the district. I love the district in many areas, but some things need to be changed. Thank you.
The Board of Education Committee reports.
The board of education committee reports, um, what a policy.
Thank you, President Papalia. On tonight's agenda, we have one policy being recommended for readoption by the board. This policy was updated out of phase by legal, uh, due to some recently passed New York State laws.
And Mr. Crabtree is not with us this evening, but I know we have a legislative meeting scheduled for Wednesday at here at five P M. Here. Thank you. Lieutenant's comments.
Thank you. And I apologize, I have a, a long list. So, uh, this past week, um, we had the junior high honor roll on Thursday for ninth grade and then on Friday for eighth grade. The sheer numbers were really impressive, uh, for the first marking period. Mr. Farfalia presented and spoke to all of the students, uh, uh, that were there and parents were also invited. So it was nice to see all the students there and we want to make sure that those, uh, students on the honor roll continue uh, as the marking periods can, uh, go on. Um, there are parent conferences that took place, um, this past week and, uh, for K six or pre-K six. Um, so it was quite busy. Our boys hockey team, um, had a big win. Um, it says Cole Prevost netted a hat trick. Andrew Davis had two goals. Tyler Maluski had one goal. Uh, Leighton Sullivan had, uh, twenty-seven saves in net. Um, boys basketball, um, at the time had one win, but they're two and O now. They, they just beat CBA. Um, so they're, they're moving really well. Um, we had this Saturday, um, uh, kind of a historic event. Uh, we had a wrestling tournament, but we also had, uh, first ever girls wrestling. And one of our students, Megan McGrath, uh, won in the one fourteen weight class, had a pin. Um, the girls as a whole placed fifth. Uh, Lillian, um, uh, trying to remember, see her last name, placed second. Um, uh, Ellsworth placed third, Ariana Welsh placed third, Sophie Segru placed fourth, and the team overall was fifth out of fourteen. So at eighteen. Okay. So it was very impressive and, uh, again, historic event. Um, we also have one of our, our young students, Kennedy Jones, uh, has been impressive with her running cross-country. Um, she placed fifth in the section. We had also, um, many others. Sophia Graham grabbed a victory in the one thousand. Um, Jayden Mackey darted to a win in the fifty-five meters. Catherine Harbaugh, Grace Scoville, Julia Scoville, uh, also won in ten minutes and twenty-eight seconds. Um, boys CNS Cameron Ingram took home a win at the fifty-five meter hurdles. Um, we have a lot of things going on and our students doing well. And I believe, uh, uh, Camden Bembry, two hundred and fifteen pounds in wrestling, also won and the team overall came in second. So um, it was a busy, busy week and weekend and a lot of good things happening for, uh, students in the district.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Board of Education comments. Do we have any comments for the other order here? Yes, I see.
Sorry, you know, I got to piggyback on the wrestling.
No problem.
It, it was, I just want everyone to know how amazing, like thirteen girls that have never, only two of the thirteen were varsity athletes in other sports. Like the rest of these kids, most of them have never competed at all. So with three weeks of training to go and do what they did was just, it was amazing. And more importantly, the camaraderie, I mean, these girls were just cheering each other on the whole time. I mean, it was ten hours that they were here in this building and it, or I guess next door. It, it was, it was insane, like just how well they did and just they were talking to the other teams after, like, it was just such a positive, good experience. Um, and Mr. Karahera is just, he's amazing. He's so positive with these kids, so patient. I mean, it's crazy. And one more thing, I'm so proud of the boys team. The boys wrestling team has been so supportive of the girls and I'm just super appreciative of that. So I just wanted to point that out. So who, is it Mr. Wise? Who's the boys? He should be very proud of those boys because they've been very, very supportive of the girls. So thank you for the opportunity to, you know, historic moment.
Thank you. Okay. No other comments. I will go to Thomas for student board member. Yes, sir.
Uh, so not really too much to know, uh, this time around, but, uh, uh, one of my friends, uh, Andy is a junior. He did give me an interesting idea I thought I'd at least, uh, mention today. So, uh, he had talked about, uh, how clubs are like, you know, brought up and they kind of just happen, um, in some of the schools. And he thought it'd be interesting if there was kind of, uh, means for students to almost, uh, submit ideas to clubs. Because a lot of the times the way that clubs start is a student or a teacher has an idea and they kind of already have that baseline connection. Um, but he was thinking that maybe there would be, uh, for example, some sort of deadline in the first half and then deadline in the second half of the year for, um, basically where students could submit, uh, club ideas and then teachers, teachers that maybe don't know these students, um, could look at this list of club ideas and if any of them were interested in, uh, starting those clubs, uh, then the student and teacher could connect and, uh, get that started. So yeah, just a really interesting idea I thought I'd mentioned today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to routine action items and I'll ask for my motion, please, put the minutes of the meeting, meeting of November twentieth before us. Motion from Dr. Kramer sec from Mr. Luden. They are before us. Any questions, concerns? Being none. All in favor? Pose, those are carried. Motion, please, for item B, consideration of classification of school placement disabled students by CSE. Motion from Dr. Kramer sec from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Any questions? Being not all in favor? Pose, that is carried. Discussion action items, A, please, a motion for the resolution authorizing certain matters relating to the DASNY grants. Motion, Mr. Luden, sec from Miss Segru. Questions or comments? Being none, all in favor? Pose, that is carried. Knowledge limited gifts, a motion, please, to accept that. Motion from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Thorne, any questions? None all in favor? Pose, and that is carried. And a resolution to approve the teacher lead evaluators, motion from Mr. Marizio, sec from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Questions, discussion? Being not all in favor? Pose, that item is carried. Declaration of marketable and non-marketable surplus, D, a motion, please, for that motion, Mr. Moody Wuzik, sec from Dr. Kramer. Any questions? Seeing not all in favor? Pose, that is carried and E, policy fifty-three fifteen, motion from Mr. Thorne, sec from Mr. Luden. Brought to us, Mr. Thorne brought it up earlier. Any questions? None all in favor? Pose, and that is carried. We have a retirement to recognize. Just one, that's Charles Jorgensen, motor equipment operator, retiring with twenty-two point three years of service. Thank him for his service and wish him well and a long and healthy retirement. Motion, please, for instructional personnel report, A, motion from Mr. Luden, sec from Mr. Thorne. A is before us. Any questions? Being not all in favor? Pose, and that is carried. Support staff personnel report, B, a motion, please, from Mr. Luden, second from Miss Segru. Any questions? And all in favor? Pose, and that is carried and administrative personnel report, C, a motion, please, to please. Marizio, sec from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Question?
Hold on, say, can I say something?
Can you say, absolutely.
I just want to say I'm very, very, very excited to have Jamie Sullivan coming on as, um, as the new director of elementary ed, um, with the job she's done at the high school. Been amazing and I'm super excited for her in this role and I know she's going to succeed with leaps and bounds.
Awesome. Thank you. Any comments? Being not all in favor? Pose, and that is carried. I'll applaud again now that it's carried. Okay. Yeah, at this time, I'm going to make a motion for executive session and I'll ask for a second. The motion is to move a new executive session for the purpose of reviewing one personnel matter and one legal matter with no action to follow and one parental appeal with action to follow. If I get a second, that's from Miss Marizio. Any discussion? Being not all in favor? Pose, that is carried and a motion for adjournment, please. Miss Marizio, sec from Mr. Luden, any discussion? Seeing not all in favor? Pose, we are adjourned. Seven seventeen. Thank you.